It is 6:01 and I now call this meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors to order. We have six of us in person and one person online, so all are in attendance. And we're going to now move into executive session under ORS192.6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated to carry on labor negotiations. We will be back in open session at approximately 7:00 PM. It's now 7:02. We will convene back into regular open session and commence with the flag salute. All right. Jonathan, would you read the Board Superintendent Operating Agreement?
Sure. All right. Under collaborative governance, members of the Board and Superintendent will work together in good faith as a team in the best interest of students, modeling a willingness to learn together. Board members will recognize and respect the Superintendent's responsibility to manage the school district and to district employees, to direct, excuse me, district employees in district and school matters. Board members will give careful consideration, listening to all perspectives, to all issues brought to the Board by individuals and district leadership. The Board may only make decisions at properly called meetings. Board members recognize that individual members have no authority to take individual action in policy or district, in policy or district and school administrative matters unless so authorized by a Board vote. Under communication agreements, Board members must follow the chain of responsibility and communicate directly with the Superintendent when a question arises or a concern or complaint is voiced by a staff member, student, parent, or community member. Board members will endeavor to communicate directly with the Superintendent or Board Chair prior to meetings of the Board to address questions and/or concerns about agenda items. Board members and the Superintendent recognize that good answers often require preparation in advance of Board meetings. When a Board member and/or the Superintendent has an individual concern, he or she must communicate one-on-one with any member of the Board Superintendent team as appropriate. In the interest of public transparency and full robust debate, Board members will endeavor to actively engage in and contribute to Board discussions and to share their perspectives on topics before the Board. Full participation from members in advance of a vote supports the Board in making informed, well-considered decisions on important district matters.
Thank you. All right. Next up is the agenda review. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the agenda as published. Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as published. We usually don't discuss this. We can vote.
Janet?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
All in favor.
All right. Number seven, consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Go ahead.
Janet?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lori?
Oh, yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
All in favor.
All right. So we are at student representative time. We have Galilea Hernandez and Avery Lord here.
My name is Galilea Hernandez and I am the ASB secretary. Hello, I am Avery Lord and I am the senior class vice president. Thank you so much for having us to share the activities and events that are happening at Silverton High School.
All winter sports have now finished off their season. Girls' basketball went to state last week and ended their season with putting on last Friday. They took home fourth in state.
Our spring sports have recently started up. Baseball, softball, tennis, track, and golf have all started practicing for their upcoming seasons.
Dance team has their state championships this Friday, March 17th. They perform at 5:35 and 7:25.
Our SHS Key Club and Interact Club worked with SACCA on Saturday to drop off food bags to neighborhoods in our community. They will pick up the bags in one week and then sort the donations to deliver to SACCA.
Choir has their spring concert this Wednesday, March 15th at 7:00 PM in the auditorium.
Last week was Classified Staff Appreciation Week. ASB gave them small gifts as a token of appreciation for everything that they do for our school.
Coming up is Best Fox Ever, our annual mock pageant previously known as Mr. SHS, where we come together to raise money for Medical Teams International and SACCA. This year, our show is planned for April 22nd at 7:00 PM in the SHS auditorium. ASB has been working hard with all the contestants and teammates to put on the best show. This year's contestants include Manuel Salazar, Adeline Rich, Oscar Marks, Josie Lykum, Mateo Pardo, and Grace Trigger.
We have our annual bingo and silent auction fundraiser for Best Fox Ever on April 13th at 6:00 PM in the Silverton High School Commons. It will be $15 for community members and $10 for students with dinner and dessert included made by our culinary arts class. We would love for you to join us at this fundraiser as well as join us at the show on April 22nd. ASB has also been planning other fundraisers for the student body, including a Mario Kart tournament, spelling bee, teacher karaoke, and more.
Thank you for your time and go Foxes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we have another special presentation, speech and debate. Students are going to present Anastasia Efimov and more.
I will be brief in this introduction. We have a Student Social Action Project presentation and I wanted to say thank you, members of the Board, Superintendent, for allowing us this opportunity. What's extremely important is that we have student advocacy voice and owning one's education and this is an opportunity for such project. I'd like to introduce Ms. Cantwitz that can share with you a little bit about the project to frame it and then the main presentation from one of our high school students. Ms. Cantwitz is our advisor for speech and debate and she'll share with you and frame what the project is all about. So if you'll come up here, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna sit. Good evening, members of the Board, colleagues, and community. My name is Katie Cantwitz. I'm addressing you this evening in my capacity as the teacher and coach of the Speech and Debate Program at SHS to introduce you to our next speaker and provide context for her address tonight. This is my 10th year in this role. One of the great joys and privileges of this position is being able to guide and bear witness to students speaking on topics that matter deeply to them, large or small, global or individual. Watching a student take the opportunity to share something that matters most to them is profound. From the start of my tenure as teacher and coach, I have always insisted that students choose their own topics and themes to work with, creating authentically meaningful pieces rather than picking what they think will win. Because while the program is an OSAA activity and students have the opportunity to take their speeches to competition, not all students are motivated by the prospect of trophies and competitive glory. Thus, the Social Action Project was born, an opportunity for students to have their voices heard by an audience who can in turn be sparked by their passion to make a change. In brief, the project is this. Students are tasked with taking the original topic of their competitive speech and reworking it for a different audience who may benefit from hearing them. In class, they work through the rhetorical situation of their piece, selecting a new audience, creating a public-facing project for that audience, and making adjustments to the content and form of their presentation to best fit this new context. And then they have to put that new presentation out into the world. Tonight's speaker has chosen you, school board members, as her intended audience. I encourage you to hear her passion and dedication to her chosen topic with an open heart and an open mind. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce Anastasia Efimov, ninth grade student at SHS.
Try it. Nevermind. Okay.
I would like to thank you all for attending today. My name is Anastasia Efimov and I am a student at Silverton Middle High School. Today, I will be talking to you about why I think you should add a second language instruction into elementary and middle school level. First off, learning a second language at such a young age is extremely beneficial for the community as a whole, future translators or interpreters, plus a lot more bilingual specific jobs. Another great reason is how learning language will boost up the traits we want most for our children. Some examples are problem-solving, critical thinking, and listening skills, not to mention how this will help us understand other cultures and the world better and more, not being so wrapped up in our little bubble of a community. This leads me to my next point, which is the young brain's advantage to learning languages. When we are about zero to three years old, we are in the critical period, which is our prime time to learn important skills such as walking, talking, and social skills. This is our prime time because our brains can make neural pathways at a very fast rate compared to when we are at a stage of our life. Basically, the more you learn, the harder it is to learn new things. Now, keep in mind that it is theorized that if a baby does not learn any language, including nonverbal languages, that they may never be able to learn any language. Obviously, we can't know for sure if this is true because testing would be inhumane. But if it is that important to learn one language, then think about how important it is to learn a second one. Now, now that you have somewhat of an understanding on what I'm talking about, here are some reasons why children are the best candidates for learning language. First, children have little to no responsibilities, maybe a chore here and there, but nothing major. This is great because they have all this time to learn language. Children also aren't as afraid to make mistakes compared to adults. This can hold some back from learning as much. Moreover, kids don't have that great of critical thinking skills or thinking before they talk, which would normally be bad, but in this case, it's great. The best way to learn is from your mistakes, trial and error. In summary, the hard facts that state children are better learners for language than anyone else in the world cannot be ignored. Plus, the benefits of learning a second language young outweigh the challenges that may occur. And this is why I ask you to change the elementary and middle school curriculum to have a second language. Thank you for your time.
You're good. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
All right. Let's move on to number 10. We have a principal report from Jamie McCarty regarding Victor Point and Evergreen.
Evening, members of the Board. Thanks for having me. I always look forward to tonight. It's my one-time brag on our schools and all the hard work they're doing and I get the privilege tonight to talk to you a little bit about Evergreen and Victor Point School after the amazing speech. I always get placed somehow on the agenda to where, yeah, it's just a pretty amazing ninth grader can speak like that. It's pretty awesome. I've asked my two colleagues, Ms. Lierman and Ms. Roberts, if they wanted to join me up here. They said they have me back there for moral support, so they got me if needed. But this is my ninth year at Victor Point and my seventh year at Evergreen and so it's kind of a special year for me. You know, I started with the Kinders and now they're eighth graders at Victor Point. And my first two years, I was at Silvercrest, so this is my seventh at Evergreen. But pretty amazing to see a group of kids as Kinders and see them all the way through to eighth grade and just see all the effort it takes by a staff and a collaborative approach and student learning and everything that goes into that child and just excited to send them off to the high school. They're ready. But tonight, I just want to tell you a little bit about both schools and the goals that we've set for the year. You know, I think every school really starts with its school culture and what the students, what the staff, and what the parents put into your school. And I feel like you can feel that school culture when you walk through the building. When you walk through the front door, you can feel a Victor Point culture, you can feel an Evergreen culture. They're both different. They're both unique. They both have just an amazing feel. The staff there works so hard. The students put in everything. The parents work together and it's that team approach that really makes our schools go. And I'm just so proud of the effort that they give daily. You know, I want to talk just a little bit about culture and then I'll go into our student learning goals and our SEL. But EV and BP positive school culture is associated with a range of positive outcomes for students, staff, and entire systems. We know that having a school culture with a positive feeling where learning is a number one priority will create a setting that students, staff, parents, and our school board can be proud of. And I, you know, I think it takes all of those to make a full school to where we can take full ownership and where our cabinet and where our school board and our parents can just take pride in our schools. And so that's our goal always. A positive school culture is so important, it creates higher levels of attendance and engagement for students and staff, a reduced teacher turnover, keeping our teachers, retaining our teachers, having them feel great about coming to school. You know, this is my 25th year in education and there hasn't been a day where I cannot wait to get to school. I hope that never ends. When that ends, I know I'm done. But I just can't wait to get in the car. I can't wait to listen to some music and drive to school and think about all the great things we're going to do for kids that day. But thus, that turnover is creating that for everyone. We want everyone to feel that when they enter our building. A reduced amount of violent behaviors and just behaviors itself and with student engagement, with a positive school culture, always creating systems for kids, creating positive incentives, creating goals and achievements and charts and things for kids to aspire towards every day creates less behavior, right? Because they're always working on the next thing and what can I do? And then just higher achievement outcomes. And I think that's the overall goal is our kids gaining ground and our number one student learning goal is all kids at grade level. And so with that culture and with that, I think you can create all those behavior, less behavior, and positive outcomes. You know, I think our staffs do this at both schools tremendously. It starts the day. We have, Ms. Lierman actually is here.
We've got a caller here.
Oh, am I going to use that? Thank you.
How's that?
That's awesome. I will keep up with my... Ms. Lierman starts our day in the car line. Every day, this morning, it was pouring down rain, torrential downstorm. She's out there for 15 minutes. Kids coming, opening doors, helping them out at car seats, walking them in, creating buddies for them to walk in. The little Kinders don't want to walk in alone, so we got older kids. But that's where it starts and it starts in our hallways with our staff at doors greeting kids with smiles and faces and high fives and hugs. But I think it starts when they enter and then it, you know, the end of the day is sending them off and singing songs to them as they go and staff out in hallways saying, "I can't wait to see you tomorrow." Bus drivers greeting with a smile. Our staff demeanor, we're always upbeat. We're always positive. We go the extra mile. We're compassionate. We're empathetic and we have no excuses at our school. So if our schools do not achieve, that is on us, whether that be an SEL or a behavior or academics. We make no excuses. It falls on us. We have them six hours a day and we take that attitude each and every day. And it's just a huge partner with our PTC and EPTCs at both schools. It takes, you know, the parents to rally, the kids and the staff working together and we're always working on common goals. So whether that be we're raising funds for a playground or a covered play structure, whatever, it's a one goal. It's a whole community and we're trying to do that together. So I think that culture builds as we go. And then I think it just carries into our academic culture. Student learning, the number one goal in our strategic plan is every kid on grade level and students' learning is our number one priority and it starts with our teacher leaders. You know, our teachers at both schools are leaders. They're leaders in their PLCs, they're leaders in our school, they're leaders amongst our community. Our community members look at them as our school leaders. And when you have that respect and trust by your community, it gives people a lot of hope and presence that things are going to happen well at your schools. And so I just commend our teachers and I commend our support staff. Like if we don't have a support staff there in the classroom, our kids feel it. The next day, they come back, they're giving them hugs and they missed them. But it's everyone from our custodian to our cook to our classifieds, it takes an entire army there. I think every minute counts with student learning. And so kids enter classrooms, there's a starter on the board, right? Anytime, classroom time, we got starters, we got things happening for kids, there's high expectations. And then we want to take a competitive approach. Where does a kid start and where do they end? And we want to, you know, determine where they're at and where we're taking them through our data teams and through our PLCs and through our work and through our constant looking at data and how we're going to reach those kids. And then just our care team meetings, we're really focusing on our 20% of kids that are below and what are our interventions? How are we creating systems within our school to make sure that no kids are, were leaving behind? And so we'll meet in our care team 20% meetings and making sure every kid... Oh, thank you. See, this is what I need. Just making sure every kid is not left. We know where every kid is in our schools, both schools, what their data states, where they're at with grade level, and where we're going with them. We started a tutoring program after school and so with that 20%, we have those kids that need that extra working with our classified support after school. So teachers doing classroom stuff with those kiddos and after school, wherever they're at and whatever interventions we're working on, we have a separate tutoring for after school, 30 minutes, three days a week, and an hour on Wednesdays. And so we have four aides working with our students, giving them that extra support and time. And luckily, we have parents. We don't have transportation, so they're able to arrange it and come and pick them up late. But it's really been powerful to see that work. Building teams, just vertical alignment when we get our building days. Our staff's working K2, 3, 5, 6, 8 and really work on the vertical, whether we're talking about common language across the literacy, math, math facts, AR, reading goals, whatever that might be that we're focused on there. And then our PLC K8 teams, which is, you know, guaranteed and viable curriculum across. And that's what we're doing district-wide and that's the goals that we have set with our cabinet and, you know, our staff has everywhere from projection maps to unit maps to learning targets to on pace. We can tell you that both schools are on pace and the learning and our projections are there and our units are there and our kids are, we're really developing that across our entire district, which is pretty awesome to see. But our both staffs have worked super hard on that and it's been a lot of work, but really proud of that. School-wide goals, those are just our two goals. The first one with our student learning and so we have started DIBELS this year, which is just the dynamic indicators of basic early literacy skills. And so we're using that for K5 and so we've created goals across the school year. It's brand new, so we're just learning it as we go. But we've put in a lot of time to kind of the indicators and how we can get better with early phonics, language, literacy, fluency across. And so that's kind of where we started. We started at Victor Point at 50%. In the fall, in the winter, we were at 58%. And then at Evergreen, we started at 63% in the fall and then Evergreen started at 58... Sorry. Where am I? Evergreen. In the fall was 63 and now in the winter, we're at 72 and our goal is 85. So we've got some work to do at both schools to gain those goals this year, but we feel really good with the work that staff's doing and the kids are doing and feel like we can get there at both schools. And then our second goal has to do with SEL and just developing that SEL across our school. It's our SEL time in classrooms, 15 to 30 minutes a day, teaching behavior skills, how to get along. We have our guidance counselor in our classrooms, teaching skills, and it really is a team approach. And we don't just use that time to teach SEL. We take any time we can teach SEL and teach SEL. How to be a great kid, how to have a good heart, how to be understanding, how to choose wisely with your friends. When things aren't happening, where to go, how to go, how to do it. And it's really exciting to combine the two because this one is as important as this one. Because if you don't have them both and you don't have that behavior, you can't do the learning. And so our teachers and staff do an amazing job there. And then I just kind of put kind of the adult actions, kind of how we're going to get there because I think the best part of setting a goal is accountability of the goal, like the accountability of the person that sets it, starting with our superintendent and that carries down to the schools because we want to follow along with our strategic plan. And then for me, how do I hold myself accountable and hold our teachers and staff accountable to making sure this is the number one priority in our schools? And so I just kind of put a little action plan of those are the kind of the things we're going to do in order to, for us to all be accountable to those. And it just really goes through on the student learning about the projection maps, the unit maps, learning targets aligned in student-friendly language, and our 20% meetings. It really comes down to our interventions and how hard we're digging deep into student learning. And then SELs is just those daily explicit lessons and just that target of positive student behaviors. We have school walkabouts where we go to every piece of our school, classrooms, hallways, playgrounds, and we really explicitly teach what we want kids to see, what we want to see from kids and what it looks like walking out to the playground. And we don't walk on rails, we don't kick rocks, we don't... But we don't keep saying we don't, right? Everything's positive. This, oh, Johnny's doing it great. I see how straight line he's walking. I'm using too many don'ts tonight. But what we want to see and we're teaching those behaviors with our kids constantly and just kind of a plan there. And then just some really neat things we have going on at our schools, both schools. Just strong parent-teacher clubs right now. You know, we went from COVID to really like everything's virtual and just things were kind of dropping off to now we're just back. We got parents in classrooms, we got volunteers everywhere. Like today, there must have been 20 parents in our building with Chili Feed coming up Thursday night and we got chili pots out and we're cleaning and we're collecting money in libraries and just the whole school's full. Pretty neat. We have two OMSI assemblies coming, Reacto Blast, so if you, hopefully the school will be okay after that one, and Electrifying Science. And so those are really neat. They come into your school, they're hands-on, they're just, the kids just get so excited. Lot of field trips happening. We have a Girls on the Run and Victoria, you want to explain that real quick?
Sure.
Victoria brought it to our school and I just think it's one of the best things I've heard of in a long time.
So it's an international program and it focuses on girls in grades three through five and then there's also Heart and Soul, which is a middle school, but we're just doing grade three through five. And it, Sophie has lessons on self-esteem and, you know, learning those, making good choices, making goals, setting goals, and accomplishing our goals and building relationships and girl power and all of those, you know, amazing, wonderful things as we train for a 5K. So healthy choices and all of those things kind of go along with it. And then there's a community project that goes along with it. And then we end the season with a 5K up in Portland, which is a huge event. Lots of tut-tuts and happy hair and face painting and the cops get run jumps along to moving forward in a 5K. An amazing program.
Thank you. I put her on the spot, but she did wonderful. And it's pretty funny because all three coaches are our third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers, Ms. Mandell, Ms. Roberts, and Mrs. Reister, and they all have boys. So this is their girl time that they get to, you know, be with girls. We have Chili Feed this Thursday, March 16th. You're all invited. We'd love to see you out there. And Run for the Hills, April 22nd. There's a one-mile kid run, 5, 10, and 15K. Those are our two biggest fundraisers of the year, the Run for the Hills and the Chili Feed. We have The Music Man. Mrs. Lierman is back with an amazing production. We're putting on The Music Man this year at Victor Point and our new music teacher is also helping out with our production, Mrs. Cramm. And anything you want to say about that?
Thank you. Covered it.
Okay.
May 12th and 13th.
May 12th and 13th. Middle school sports have been awesome to have back. We got our end-of-the-year track meet that's going to come up that I know all the kids from all the schools look forward to meeting and doing that. Reading Under the Stars, we just had an amazing night at Victor Point where the kids come... come in and they read in all the classrooms. We had a big parent dinner. Cookies vanished quickly. I think kids took more than one. That was the rule, but they, but that was a really fun night. We have Grandparents' Day going at Evergreen coming up. And our cupboard play area is finally completed. That's been a long time coming. So it's a beautiful structure and it really, really looks good. So. Any questions?
That was a complete thorough report.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it, Janie. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right. Erin, would you do me a favor and pull up the resolution for classified employees? That's our next topic. Classified Appreciation Week was March 6th through 10th. And we have a resolution that Erin's going to read, celebrating our classified employees. And afterwards, if board members want to say something personal, feel free.
Let me find it.
Sorry, I put you on the spot.
Not a problem.
There it is.
Okay. So Silver Falls School District Resolution on Classified Employee Appreciation Week. Whereas the education of youth is essential to the future of our community, state, country and world. And whereas classified employees are the backbone of our public education system. And whereas classified employees work directly with students, teachers, administrators, parents, volunteers, business partners and community members. And whereas classified employees support the smooth operations of offices, the safety and maintenance of the buildings and property, healthy nutrition and direct instruction of students. And whereas our community depends on and trusts classified employees to serve students. And whereas classified employees with their diverse talents and true dedication nurture students throughout their school years. Now therefore be it resolved that the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors proclaims March 5th through the 9th to be Classified Employee Appreciation Week. And be it further resolved that the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors strongly encourages all board, all members of our community to join in this observance, recognition and dedication and hard work of these individuals.
And I know lots of celebrations happened last week. I wanted to say personally, I work with classified employees every day and there's no way we could do this work without them. And I appreciate the dedication, especially in the last few years. It's not been, it's not been easy for any of us really, but our classified employees have really stepped up. So thank you all.
Any other remarks?
All right. We're going to move on to public comment. So I'm going to read a statement. We're glad you are here and welcome you to address the board with your ideas, concerns or compliments. Please keep the following in mind. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand to be recognized by the board chair. If attending remotely, please use the raise hand feature within Zoom. For the record, please provide your name and relationship with the, to the district. Please keep individual remarks to three minutes. If speaking as a representative on behalf of a group of three or more, comment time will be extended to five minutes. A second public comment period will occur later in the meeting that is specific to discussion and action items only. The board will not hear complaints against individual district staff or board members during public comment. Please understand that the board's primary role is to listen and you likely will not receive an immediate response. Finally, remember, we all model the way for our students and ask that you share your thoughts respectfully and in accordance with the Silver Falls School District Board decorum agreement. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak? Mr. Bush, do we have any online?
I see no hands raised, no hands raised from attendees online.
Okay. Well, we do have a second public comment period later on, so we'll check back again then. We're ready for number 13, Administrator and Staff Reports. We're going to start with Scott Drew, Superintendent. And the topic.
Updates, just, I need to grab that.
All right. Yes, Superintendent Report. I was going to say you were going to update us on math curriculum, but I knew that was not, I know, that was not it.
Leslie's really excited about that.
I have friends with me though, who are very excited.
All right. So I just wanted to give you a few updates just in what we've been working on, what has been taking just about all of our time here in Silver Falls for a very long time. And we're coming to the home stretch of what will hopefully be a successful bond campaign, but that is to be determined by the board. And so just to go back to the visual here, and I know you all know this because you've attended six of our Tell Us What You Think Bond input sessions. But I want to go over these slides because I want our public to know as well, just another opportunity. So we started phase one, as you recall, with the Bond Advisory Committee back in August. We were really clear with the charge of that committee, what the expectation was. And then we had some professional polling done, kind of the state of the district. And then we worked through about four meetings and came up with the draft recommendation. And a lot of the polling information went into making that draft recommendation that we then brought to the board at the January work session and that we're now receiving community feedback on. So this week, on Wednesday, we're at Scott's Mills, Thursday, we're at Pratom. And then we have two others after that that we had to reschedule. And I have that on another slide. So we're right on target to have our April 20th meeting, which will be our final Bond Advisory Committee meeting where we will take the information we learned from the feedback sessions. And when I say we, I mean the Bond Advisory Committee, which I'm not a part of. They will come up with a final recommendation that will be introduced to the board at the May work session. And of course, you all know that we're looking for a November 2023, this year, election. There are the full schedule of the 10. I want to thank you, board members, and especially our administrators for attending each one of them. I think it's very important, not just from a unity standpoint, but it gives, gives our principals an opportunity to see the different districts, the different schools in our district and the different cultures as well. And so April 6th and 5th, April 5th and 6th will be the two makeup days. All right. So this is the month where we start the full-on communication and engagement plan. So you might be asking, well, aren't the listening sessions or the input sessions communication plans? Well, yeah, but those are, that's to get the feedback for the Bond Advisory Committee, really. All of that's going to be taken and typed into a report and then it's going to be given to the committee members so they can make adjustments. This is having to do with the actual campaign and the information phase that we're in. And this all comes from Wright Public Affairs. Of course, we do have a professional helping us with that because we are not experts in running campaigns, we're not expert pollsters, and we need a lot of help because we have one goal here and that's to pass the bond at all costs. And so we want to make sure that if it doesn't pass, it's not because of something we left undone. So we're getting really good information and advice from Jeremy Wright. And he breaks it down into these five categories here. And I'll put this on Board Book as well, and you have it in front of you if you want to click on it. But it basically just goes through and talks about the different groups that we need to message. And then in his communication plan, it really boils down to what is our focus each month? And what are the types of things we have to do to set ourselves up for success? Who has the lead on that and when the deadlines are? And so there's going to be a lot of information coming our way that he handles. So we brought in him to reach the folks that we don't serve. Because 66% of the electorate, we know, will not have kids in our school. We know that from the polling. And so we need to do all the technical things right. And he will be following up with us and we meet every other week. We meet tomorrow, as a matter of fact, with Wenahaw and with Wright Public Affairs to go over where we are in our plan and in our campaign. And that just gives you an idea of what April will look like. And that's what November looks like. So the month of, we have things coming down to the wire and I think it's kind of interesting to look through that. And kind of see what's coming ahead. But there's one for each month and that's starting right now. Our communications coordinator, Derek McElfresh, really plays a major role in that as well as our district liaison. And again, we've said this in every school community, that it's not about the bond we want, it's about the bond that our community is willing to support. And we continue to get really good feedback, really good questions, really good feedback. This will be the first time in the district's history we've ever passed a bond that reaches all schools. And it is a monumental effort. I can't tell you how appreciative I am of some of your comments during our sessions. Your words carry a lot of weight in our different school communities and I cannot thank you enough. It would not be the same without you. Having said that, it's a quick overview of where we are. Any questions?
Doesn't look like it. Thanks for the lists. Those are pretty, pretty neat to see what's coming up next.
Sure.
All right.
Well, thank you. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Leslie.
Yep. K, kindergarten through eighth grade math curriculum adoption.
Good evening, everyone. I am just going to begin by just giving you a general reminder of what instructional materials adoption is, what that looks like. The State of Oregon goes out every seven years and reviews and evaluates materials according to rubrics. And they publish an approved list. And we rotate through subject areas every seven years. So this was the year that math was open and we formed a K-12 work group. And this evening, I have K-8 teachers here to share their experiences on the work group. 912 is still researching. Hopefully next month, we'll have them here for you. Remember that ODE is only required to align 51% of the standards that we're required to teach in the materials that they approve. So we really set our teachers up for a very difficult job to look at all of these materials. Our K5 teacher team narrowed it down to the top two choices. And ultimately, I'm recommending iReady Math for our K5 adoption. And our 6-8 teacher team continued to find their current adoption of Shannon McCott Ed Gems to meet their needs and be the best choice for their students. And so they're looking at some additions from that material, but mostly sticking with what they currently have. And so now I'd like to turn it over to Victoria, who teaches at Victor Point. And she's going to share about her experiences.
Victoria Roberts. I teach third grade at Victor Point. So joining the curriculum team has been a great experience. I was able to, you know, research some of the different curriculums that were available and try out some of the lessons, the curriculum in my classroom. I was able to talk with other members of the curriculum team and kind of bounce ideas back and forth about what we liked about the curriculum, what we didn't like about it, pros and cons and things like that. So we took quite a bit of time going back and forth and talking about the different pros and cons of the different curriculums. And then we also were able to see presentations from the different curriculums about what they offer, what professional developments that they offer and those kinds of things so that we could help decide what we would like to do.
I'm Megan Lerman and I was looking at 6-8 math. And we ultimately decided to stick with what we currently have for a couple reasons. One, it's aligned to the curriculum, I mean, to the standards already. In 6-8 math, the standards basically stayed the same, but they took away the exemplars that made it a little more vague on what the standards were for the Oregon edition. And so what happened in the Oregon books, when they realigned to those standards, they also made the rigor of it a little bit less. And so we decided to keep what we currently have, to keep that rigor up. Shannon McCott does an excellent job with her depth of knowledge that we really enjoyed. And teacher supports, engaging activities that are already built in so that we don't have to go look for them, which the kids love, teachers love, they're easy even on a sub day when you don't want to introduce new material to get that out there. One thing that we did want to add that's included in all of Shannon's new adoptions, but she has it as an add-on for those that are keeping their old ones, are called fluency boards. And what they do is they spiral different skills from both sixth, seventh and eighth grades and with a pre-test and a post-test. And then it also has five different levels of those depths of knowledge. So if you can, on your pre-test, you can see, oh, the student really missed DOK two. And then instead of doing all the DOKs, you can start them where they're at and then spiral through, which is something we were really looking for in our curriculum. Has some currently, but the fluency boards did a lot more of the review material instead of just spiraling the new material.
And this is Jen Capekner. She teaches second grade at Mark Twain and she did not want to speak tonight, but she's here for moral support and to answer questions. So with that, are there any questions?
Sounds pretty cool.
That's good.
Sounds like you guys thought through everything.
I guess for the new, the new K, was it K4?
K5.
K5. What was the big selling point on the new one? I didn't really hear that, so.
So our two top choices for K5 were iReady Math and Oregon Math. And our teacher group was really torn to make the decision. And they actually didn't come to consensus. They couldn't all vote for the same thing. So I had to ultimately make the decision and we all agreed it was something, whatever material we chose was something that everyone could live with. iReady Math has really strong assessment tools. And I don't know if Jen, you would feel comfortable speaking. The K2 team in particular was really, really excited about iReady Math and we felt pretty strongly that they needed some support in their math instruction.
Just speaking to the assessment, they, you can give the assessment and then it tells you exactly where the student is and gives you an alignment K5 so that if the student is advanced, you can jump ahead to that lesson and know exactly where to go. And if they need more support, you can jump back to whatever lesson it is they need. So that was, that was a real solid selling point to see that.
And we have both the textbook and many online components with iReady Math. And many districts in our area are using it. And we have seen some solid growth come from our neighboring districts that we're really excited to explore. We will be setting up lots of support and professional development for our teachers with this adoption because it is very new and different. And so they have time to learn the new materials as they're able to, because everyone's learning needs are different, as we know.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I just really like the flexibility, well, like you said, the assessment opportunities where you can zero in on where the kid really needs the support or the acceleration. So great, awesome. All right. Thank you. We're ready to move on to 13C, the financial report. Steve Nielsen, Director of Finance and Operations.
Hello.
Hi.
There was so much, so much information that came out in February. I have a lot to share, so I thought I might be fair to come up front, make better eye contact here. So first thing I want to touch on is enrollment. So there's four attachments for you on Board Book, as you probably have noticed. So a couple of them have to do with the economic forecast that came out at the end of February and then our enrollment report and our general fund financial statement. So enrollment is holding nearly steady. We're 19 down from We're 19 down from where we were when we flipped the calendar to 2023, and only 15 down from September. So that's kind of the, I would say, the little second semester drop that we typically have. So that's not too bad. So we're still at a 34% recovery rate from our low point in, what was it, January? Our low point was what? June of 2022 was our low point. So that doesn't sound overwhelming, even though we were quite excited about that. We were waiting for the other part of the equation to come out. And so that was the first thing that came out in February was we finally received an enrollment report for second-period ADMW for actuals for all school districts in the state. So I was surprised to see that statewide enrollment for 2023 is actually flat compared to last year. So I was actually expecting that most school districts would see a bit of a bump like we did. And some did, but as Scott mentioned earlier, we had a, I think, eight out of the top 10 enrollment school districts, or the Big Ten, as they call them, saw a flat or maybe even slightly worse enrollment this year. And of course, they make up a big percentage of the enrollment. So where I was expecting possibly our amount per student to actually come down a little bit, still see a net gain from our enrollment increase. Not only did our amount per student not go down from the last update, it actually went up by $200. So where I was expecting from our recovery of 35% enrollment, an increase of about $1 million on the state school fund estimate for this round, it actually was double that for this year. So the bottom line for this biennium, Erin, we can now calculate a kind of an official number. At this point now, there's still a little bit of school year to go and two more. There's another reporting period, so it could change a little bit. But for the biennium, I'm estimating that our state school fund revenue over the course of the two years is down 1.8 million over the course of two years. Now, most of that occurred last year because our enrollment drop was actually more on average than a lot of school districts. We're about 2% over the course of the biennium. And what I tried to do is calculate if our enrollment or ADMW was the same as it was in 1920, which of course we refunded on in 2021. We took the hit last year because we had two years in a row of the dropped enrollment. I kind of took that as our baseline and figured out where the amount per student would be based on statewide ADM being at that higher number, which ADMW for the state before the drop was over 700,000. I think it was on 550 students, and then with the weights, over 700,000. That is now down to 671,000 statewide, so just some interesting stats. So 32,000 ADMW drops statewide. So anyway, so that's news in the right direction. It's still, you know, a net loss for the biennium. And of course, the fact that the state only increased the state school fund by $200 million from 1921 to 2123 means that our revenue, state school fund revenue, with these calculations involved here, would have only increased 1.5% over, you know, this biennium compared to last. So that's, we were already starting at a rough spot with the funding level. So we do have better news looking forward for 2325, but I wanted to present the latest data there. So I was happy to see, I didn't expect to see flat enrollment statewide. The next piece, so as you know, the, I believe it was January 31st, Governor Kotek's proposed budget came out. Now, in a year like this where we had a gubernatorial change, usually the governor starts the proceedings, usually due December 1st, but with the election year, it was the State Budget Office that put out the first budget, which was $9.5 billion. So that's, again, not great. That's only an increase of 200 million. Then Governor Kotek came out with a $9.9 billion state school fund proposal. We can't count on that, although ODE is required to put out our first state school fund estimate March 1st, and so they use the $9.9 billion number. But the next phase in this process will be the legislative co-chairs, co-chairs of the Ways and Means. They must produce their version of the 2325 budget. Now, that could come out tomorrow, or it could be another month from now. There's no due date for them to produce this document, but I do anticipate it coming out. Usually, it's not past the end of March. That would surprise me if it was April forward. So, you know, we'll see where that goes. I was pleasantly surprised to see the $9.9 billion number. And then, as you know, here on February 22nd, the quarterly, state quarterly economic forecast was released, the March 2023 report. Two of your attachments on Board Book are links to the Oregon Economic Analysis slide presentation and the Legislative Revenue Office presentation, and they're good reads. But just to highlight a few of the facts from the forecast from COSA here, we were definitely surprised to see that the revenue increased once again despite some of the, you know, problems we're seeing in the economy. So the projected additional revenue for 2325, it increased by $714.6 million. And net general fund and lottery revenues for the 2123 biennium are up $6.653 billion, which of course, as you know, has resulted in a record kicker, both personal and corporate. So on the personal side, people will see, when they file their 2023 returns in 2024, we'll see a nice personal kicker. But as you may recall, the corporate kicker by statute must be spent on K-12 education. So in terms of the decision-making that we have in terms of building our proposed 2023-24 budget, you know, it's hard to say, well, let's jump right to that $9.9 billion funding level because there's still quite a ways to go in the process. But I feel pretty confident that it's not going to back up to 9.5. It could possibly even go above 9.9. COSA and other agencies are advocating for $10.3 billion, which they're saying is the current service level. Not certain it's going to get to that point, but right now, we've decided to build our proposed budget on $9.7 billion. So kind of in between the 9.5 and 9.9. Until we hear something otherwise, there'll still be opportunity to pivot as we go through the next three months, obviously. So we'll build a couple of different scenarios, but that'll be our official starting point. So anyway, so the news, like most of the quarterly forecasts over the last few years, except I think for the last one, we saw surprise numbers in a positive direction. Again, the co-chairs need to get their budget released, so that'll give us another hint as to where things go. And we'll just stay tuned and be in close communication. But really, that first ODE estimate really feels like the starting point for our budget process. We have the schools working on their proposed budgets right now and starting to work with departments. And over the next three to four weeks, we'll be working to finalize that because we have our first budget committee meeting on Thursday, April 27th. That's what it's scheduled to be right now. So let's see here. What else did we have? I know that's a lot of information, but really, I think the big things are that we're seeing that our enrollment recovery resulted in a better state school funding number for this year than we even thought due to the statewide number and to give you an update on this economic forecast and how it relates to our budget, our budget planning. And we're just going to wait to see what happens in the legislature. So we'll all keep our eyes and ears peeled on that one. So I think that's it. Oh, we also have, that's what I was forgetting, interim audit this week as well for the audit testing for 2023. So if you haven't received it already, the auditors will be sending your annual questionnaires. So that'll come out this week as well.
Thanks for the heads up. Haven't received it yet.
Okay. All right.
Any questions for Steve? Thanks a bunch.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move to number 14, discussion items. 14A Superintendent Evaluation. Attached to Board Book are the two documents, and Erin's got some prepared notes to discuss with us.
Yeah. We all, as last meeting, took quite a bit of the time to go through our themes and to really come up with the ratings on each of the standards for national leadership standards and also Scott's goals. As we all know, he's spent a lot of time on that. And number one, I want to thank each of you for putting so much time into these. Professional feedback is, you know, one of our main responsibilities as board members for Scott. And so I just, again, want to reiterate the thank you for the time that you've put into this year's rating. With the assistance of Janet from OSBA, we have formed our evaluation summary and presenting that officially to Scott tonight. So we have, as you see attached to Board Book, the evaluation summary as well as the standards and goals, ratings with comments attached to those as well. So these will be presented to Scott tonight and go into his personnel file. I just want to summarize just for the record. We used, the board and superintendent also, this year we adopted a targeted feedback survey, which was put out not only to staff but also to community members just to get further in-depth ratings on the standards. Scott was evaluated on the following eight performance standards, which are national performance standards, visionary leadership, ethics and professional norms, inclusive district culture, culturally responsible instructional leadership and improvement, communication and community relations, effective organizational management, effective financial management, and finally, policy and governance and advocacy. I'll just read the summary on this one. Regarding the eight performance standards, the board determined that Scott excels in the areas of visionary district leadership, effective organizational management and policy, governance, and advocacy. The board agreed that Scott's relationship with the board is strong, and he exemplifies collaborative governance. Overall, the board has seen consistent performance in all eight standards, and would like to see Scott continue to strengthen and build more trusting professional relationships with staff and to continue to expand engagement and communications with the community and diverse groups. He also had his three goals that he had put forth on which we rated him on. And on those goals, the board decided that all three superintendent goals were accomplished, noting that Scott addressed goal one by looking at district aggregated data to build instruction that meets the needs of all students. The board also acknowledges that goal two is still in the implementation phase and that the district has several systems in place such as PlayWorks, PBIS, and Student Code of Conduct. Scott has also put a tremendous effort into goal number three, which is in relation to the general obligation bond being put on the ballot by this November. You know, as we even saw in update tonight, through bond timeline planning, organizing listing sessions, and gathering community feedback. So this is our final evaluation summary, of which we, in essence, speak as one voice. So I wanted to read that off to you, and again, you have it in Board Book as well as what our actual numeric ratings and comments were on each section. So with that being said, I did want to open it up to the floor for any further questions or comments about the evaluation.
Thank you for all your work on this, Erin. I think it's an excellent summary.
I didn't write it. So I'll say that. Janet from OSBA helped collect all this. So I think the thanks goes to Janet Avila Medina for all of her time and effort from OSBA. So greatly appreciated in her help with this.
Erin did coordinate a lot, I have to say.
I think you were.
Thank you. Thanks. I think this year, you know, we did some heavy lifting as a board in terms of the timeline and everything. So hopefully, next year's evaluation will be even smoother. I will say this year's was much smoother than last year's.
Right. It's getting better.
It's getting better. But next year should be extremely smooth, so we have a good template to go from. Any other questions?
No, I thought it was a good summary.
It was good.
I see room for improvement in our process, just that last bit. But we don't need to talk about it now, but we can be thinking about for next time how to make it maybe go more smoothly.
Scott, thanks for your self-evaluation and your openness and your honesty and your continued desire for feedback. And again, appreciate all your hard work on all the standards and all your goals.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. I think we're ready for 14B, Integrated Guidance Budget. We are going to have a discussion. Leslie's going to talk a little bit more. Every meeting, she gives us a little bit more. This is the time that we're going to vote, though, so we need to have the one last chance.
This is all information that you've already had. These are just the official documents now. Before we submit to ODE, our deadline is March 31st, and it has to be approved by you and in the notes so that I can complete the application. So I just want to thank Patrick Mulligan and Kirsten Barnes at the high school. They have been such huge influences on getting this work done and going out and collecting information, doing student interviews. It's just been fantastic since it's the high school success budget that's merging with the SIA budget. So the full application, you can see there, is attached as well as all of the budget documents that we've reviewed, we've presented about, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have before you have an action item.
Questions?
I don't have further questions. I asked several last times.
I appreciate the thorough information we received last work session on the detailed budget and all the different items. So thanks, Leslie, for, you and the team for getting that together.
Thank you, Steve and Kim, because they were the huge push to get that budget template done.
Well, it is very informative, so we appreciate it. When we, what kind of language do we need to say just that we want to adopt? Adopt the integrated guidance budget?
Approve it?
Approve, I think.
Approve?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Let's move on to discussion item 14C, which is the March 27th work session. That's during spring break, and we generally don't, we generally decide it's the board to dispense with that, but we don't want to make assumptions. And I don't want to lead you either, but I kind of had, just did. But what are our thoughts about March 27th?
I'm pretty sure I'm going to be on the White River without any internet access, personally.
I will also be without access.
I will technically be around, but I'm happy to skip.
Anybody object to taking that date off of our roll? No. Thank you, Lori. Okay. I don't think, we don't need to vote on that. It's just information for us to say we can cancel it. It's now time for a public comment. Is there anybody online? I don't think these guys want to say anything.
No, but we'll give a moment. If anybody who is online wishes to speak, they can raise their hand. Use the raise hand feature. No takers.
All right. Let's move to 16, action item, the only one we have tonight, is Integrated Guidance Budget. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the Integrated Guidance Budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Integrated Guidance Budget. We could discuss it, but I think we're done discussing, so let's just call the vote. Janet?
Yes.
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
All in favor. All right. Number 17, future agenda item request. Anybody have anything that they want, want considered for an upcoming discussion item? All right. I see nobody wants to talk about that, so I think we're ready to move to 18. Move into executive session under ORS 192.6602F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. It's going to be a sick leave bank request, and I will predict that it will take us five or 10 minutes to come back to open session. We are now back in open session to consider a sick leave bank request. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I would move that the board would approve a 25-day sick leave bank for Terry Wells.
Mills.
Mills, I'm sorry. Excuse me, Terry Mills.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve a sick leave bank for an additional 20 days for Terry Mills.
25.
Oh, sorry, 25. I really should have written that down. Let's vote. Janet?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Tom?